So everyone is aware we are recording.
I'd like to call maybe their town council meeting door. If I get a roll call, please. Here.
President.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Lynn.
Here.
That was here.
Here.
If you all join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and that brings us to adjustment to the agenda. There's an order update thirty-three, twenty-two, and thirty-four, twenty-two, and updates to the manager's report. Without seeking approval, I'm going to say that February twenty-fourth, twenty-two, regular reading.
So move.
Motion by Braden, taken by Council McEwen, all those in favor. I'm going to do roll call voting still. Council Braden.
Yes.
Council Brian.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McEwen.
Aye.
Chair Billy By, Council Madore.
Aye.
Council Phil here.
Aye.
And with that, Mr. Carroll, thank you for being here. Mr. Carroll's the MRC executive director to give us kind of an update and for the council and community members to ask questions. Mr. Carroll, if you would just like to introduce yourself and give us an update of basically what we're seeing. And you are muted.
Thank you. Thank you for having me and having me attend your meeting. My name is Michael Carroll. I'm the executive director with the MRC. I started with the MRC of July of two thousand nineteen. I prepared an update for you that we actually had a town hall meeting today where we had attendance of just over sixty. So if any of you attended that, I apologize because some of this is going to be duplicate information of that. So at the first of the year, MRC started experiencing a lack of communications with the bondholders. The bondholders are the ones that are currently controlling the sale of the plant. MRC owns the land that the plant sits on, but they own the asset. We were growing very concerned and losing patience when not receiving any response from them. After the bondholders' former bidder drug this process out for over nine months and then lost exclusivity due to not securing the financing needing to close, things seemed to come to a standstill with the hand facility. Recently, after some tough conversations and negotiations between both parties, the bondholders and the MRC have reached an agreement. This is why we, this is why, oh, I was gonna say this is why we invited you here today because that's what's from the meeting earlier. The bondholder agreement, before the bondholders let go of the hand and facility and get out of everyone's way, they want to make sure that they have done everything possible to recoup as much financially as they can from the sale of this facility. The only way for them to feel that they have done that is to go through a sale process where the facility is marketed by professionals. When this all started in two thousand and twenty, bondholders initially skipped the formal sale process because they quickly found a bidder with what they felt was an acceptable offer. MRC has agreed to allow them to move forward with the final sale process, and how this works is as follows. First receiver, which bondholders have already selected and is all ready to go, will be restained. The receiver acts as the liaison between the bondholders and a go-between and a moderator for all other parties involved. Next, once the court appoints the receiver, which just did happen an hour ago, the order was filed and the appointment's taking place, the receiver will hire an investment banker. The investment banker will solicitate qualified bidders for the receiver. The word qualified is very important, which we're going to go over in a minute. Then the APA will be executed between the MRC, receiver, and bondholders. Along with the court order to appoint the receiver, the APA covers many things. This document is why the MRC is very confident moving forward with this new agreement. It lays out the ground rules, guidelines for bidders, and a deadline with a resolution, which is something we've never had in the past. Some of the essential things MRC negotiated in this agreement are buyers must be qualified to bid, meaning but not limited to proof of financial capability to close on or before June thirtieth of this year. Financial ability to complete facility improvements in operated loss until operating with a positive cash flow, must have technical capability or provide a plan for technical capability to operate the hand and facility. The final buyer will buy all the coastal assets and have all the MRC agreements and maybe others assigned to them. The facility will market to bidders who intend to restart the facility in the same or similar manner as before and consistent with the existing MRC agreements and permits, which means the bidder has to operate the facility as is. We can't have bidders come in that want to do something differently with it. And finally, one of the most crucial negotiations we accomplished was it all needs to happen and be completed by June thirtieth of this year. That's not scheduled closing. That's not get to a closing. It needs to be done by June thirtieth. MRC's role in the solicitation process, MRC will work closely with the receiver to get them up to speed on everything. We will also turn over all the information in recent contacts that we've had that are interested in bidding on the facility. MRC will then step back and let the receiver and the investment banker do their job. Once the bids are in, the receiver and the investment banker will then sit back down with the MRC for the vetting and verification process, what bids are qualified and who can move on to the next process. Once everybody agrees on the bidder for qualifications requirements are met, the receiver can move forward to select and finalize the sale process. New owner in place. Like I said earlier, one of the essential things in the agreement was the deadline. The hand and facility will have a new owner come June thirtieth of this year, whether it be a qualified buyer or the MRC. In this agreement, if a buyer is not found or bids do not exceed the MRC stalking horse bid, then the MRC will end up with the facility. So what the stalking horse bids is the MRC put a bid in for one point five million as a stalking horse, which means if they do not sell the building to a qualified, to the asset to a qualified bidder by June thirtieth, the MRC ends up with this for one point five million dollars. Up to five hundred thousand dollars of that one point five million will be, can be reimbursed to the MRC for paying the property taxes, the utilities that we've been paying to keep the facility heated, and any facility maintenance or repairs that we've done since March first. But we can't go under a million. The million dollars is the floor price. We have been working with financial institutes to see what that would look like. We've done a performer and we have put together a business plan. We know that it would take us about twenty million dollars to get the facility up and going. That would be in three phases. What that would look like is the acquisition, then the fit up, which would be taking care of the improvements, bringing back the staff and training, and then the last part of that would be the cash flow to operate the facility until it reached a positive cash flow, which after operation would be in about nine to twelve months. This is only if a bidder does not come up to the table, a qualified bidder, if they don't have a qualified bidder. The financing options that we've been looking at is a guarantee from the state. The hard part with borrowing the money is the collateral. Is so there's two ways to look at it. The first option would be a guarantee from the state on the twenty million that we'd be looking to borrow if it comes to that. And then the next would be meeting with members on a good faith credit agreement, which means that there would be a concept to that, and that concept would look like discounted rates for a certain amount of time, and then we would refinance after a certain amount of time and get that good faith, get them off the hook for that good faith agreement. The current timeline looks like this. March, receiver appointed, investment banker hired, APA signed. April, solicitations of bid probably into the beginning of May. Request to members regarding financing and municipal guarantee if needed. Town hall meeting to update members. May, review of bids, qualified buyers, MRC financing continues if needed. June, selection of qualified buyer in a closing. That's a complete update of where things are currently at as of today, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that update and just for the public and everyone else to be aware. The MRC is a municipal review committee. It's an organization that represents over a hundred communities throughout Maine, dealing with municipal solid waste. So we have as well, Mr. Carroll, who is the executive director of that organization. Any council comments or questions? Council Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I listened in today to the public meeting that they had and listened to the and they ended up there, detective session, and then they went into open session. I need to compliment the MRC board and staff on there. They did a tremendous job. They expected, I think, props every tease on every eye and really laid out a positive plan involving this all. I just wanted to congratulate Mike and Karen and the rest of the group that have laid up this option to move forward and get this thing up and operating as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Council Brian. Any other council questions, Congress? Council Madore?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'd like to know is when the time comes that the sale is enacted, right now, my understanding is the MRC owns the land that the facility is on. Is when you sell it property again, is it going to be an all situation? Are you going to sell the land along with it? Or is it simply going to be the facility itself and you retain ownership of the land? And is that going to put you in a situation, should something occur down the road where you are right now again?
Um, well, no, I hope I understand the question. I answer it properly. So right now in the current agreements, I mean, the MRC brings three things to the table. This is an eighty million dollar asset sitting on our land, but we don't own the asset. But what we bring to the table is we own the land, we have the lease agreement to lease them, not the facility, but the land the facility sits on. We also hold the permit for the waste processing. So our name is listed on the permit for the waste processing, and then we have the contracts. Our contracts are for a hundred and two thousand tons of waste that this facility processes. So the land, it kind of gives us that leverage, and I don't think we would be here today. I mean, I was a little bit lenient on my presentation there, but basically as of a month ago, we drove a lot, this is just going too long, and we drew a line in the sand. And part of drawing that line in the sand to get to here we are today, I don't know if it all could have been done if we didn't own the land. So I don't, I think owning the land is, gives us a better hand to play in this whole situation, and we have no intentions of selling the land as part of this. One thing is the land was designed, is we put over six million dollars into building that road so that site could go in there, and it was all designed so that over a twenty-year lease that would pay back the fee it cost us to build that road. So that's how that all kind of intertwines too.
Thank you very much, Council Brian.
If I may, wouldn't it also require a vote of the members to sell the land if they were going to get into that, come back to the members of the MRC?
Absolutely. It'd be a fundamental matter, and we'd have to notify the members of that and send out funnel matter notices, which allows them thirty days to call a meeting so that it could come to a vote.
Thank you very much. Any other council questions or comments? Council Brian.
I apologize, Mike. Do you have the July, June thirtieth, I believe it's Thursday coming into the fourth of July weekend? Is the expectation once the deal is signed, has there been discussion about how long you think the fourth would be opening operations?
I have my opinion. I'm from the waste industry for twenty years. I think that it will be about nine months to bring in waste, maybe a little bit earlier, but that won't be full capacity. So you'll have to bring the staff back. We've met with operators if we end up with it, so they'll have to. There was some improvements that needed to be made in the wet end to keep up with the front end. I mean, everything worked great, but there were some improvements that had to be made. That's what Coastal was waiting on to close their last loan on. So nine months before races on the floor, that would be some type of bridge waste, two, three hundred ton a day, and then within full capacity, in my prediction, within eleven to twelve months of the closing.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Brian. I do have a question. I'm interested in seeing kind of your perspective on the new state level changes, I guess, when it comes to municipalities being paid by producers, manufacturers of their packaging and so on. How do you see that affecting us through this process?
So we've actually worked with them because they wanted to know how it was going to work. So the nice thing is, is we have all the data to show. So everybody, we record everybody's tonnage. So everything that comes into the facility gets recorded, and everything that comes out of the facility gets recorded. That's how we meet our required state diversion. So what would happen, how that would work is, I think we were kind of a key player in this because they were very concerned on how they would do the rebate. It would be designed as a formula to your tonnage. So if we know this much ton comes in and this much of the cardboard goes out, and we share that with the state, and then this is what the scope is made up by all the different members and how much tonnage they put in, then they'll be able to identify what percentage of that rebate each one of our members get. So we've worked on that. We actually just sent the survey out for them to help them out to get it to all the members. I think the hard part, and I don't know if you guys still have any in your area, what we're going to have to watch for is a lot of your larger companies like a Dollarama or a big lumberyard or something, they have the cardboard directly bailed and picked up, and we're going to have to watch for that and see how that's going to get recorded because if it's not going through a transfer station or not going through a facility like the hand in being processed, that weight's going to sneak through the cracks. So those vendors are putting money, I'm going to call it the kitty, because and the electronics bill had this kind of same trouble. And then, but everything that's, that's supposed, that's getting accounted for is getting missed in some of the largers, like your Home Depots, your Lowe's, your Dollaramas, those type of things because they have direct contracts, and that's being picked up right near their facilities.
Thank you. It's really insightful. I appreciate that. Any other council comment or question? Seeing none out of the public?
All the chats referred to a link that was not working for town hall streams. Chuck Pringle sent the correct one to the chat. That's all it was about. Nothing relating to this.
Thank you. Well, thank you again, Mr. Carroll, for the update and answering our questions. Most appreciated.
Thank you for having me, and feel free to reach out to me anytime if you have any more questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
With that, we'll move on to town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the council, the community. First, let me say it's nice to see you all in the same room. I had intentions to say and be there with you this evening, but I do appreciate the encouragement to and the allows to continue with my leadership class that I am part of. And so the public is aware, I am zooming in from yet another hotel room. I am a student of the Maine Development Foundation's Civic Institute for Civic Leadership Class. It's a year-long class. It does end next week, next month, but I appreciate the council being so open to allow me to continue that class during these, during these meetings and to zoom in from my hotel room. Getting into my report, you know, it was submitted. I hope you had an opportunity to read through it in a more detailed fashion. I'm going to overview here. We are in the throes of the FY twenty-three budget prep. My goal is to have a completed draft by the end of this month, and then we will work through some workshops with the counselors the first two weeks of April. We have spoken about valuation. That's a recurring theme as of late with our council meetings. Our assessor, Lorna Thompson, and I have blocked out some, some time on March seventeenth where we will devise a final plan and a budget for that to present for consideration. And if all goes well, we should be able to have that on the agenda for March twenty-fourth at our next council meeting. So I look forward to bringing that plan ahead. Now, we have set a date for the public meeting concerning the DOT bike and pen safety project. That meeting will be held on April eleventh, and it will take place in Sterns Junior Senior High School Library. We will have we will have technology in place so that we can have a hybrid meeting and allow Zoom attendance, also nice visible presentations. We will have TY Lynn and DOT there to present the findings of their bicycle and pedestrian safety study that took place along the Central Street corridor in Milauke. And their presentation will go over suggestions for for the town to consider. You know, those, those suggestions are along the lines of, you know, adaptations to lanes, you know, limiting, adding bike lanes, et cetera, crosswalks. There's a lot to be considered in that in that project. So we will be advertising that in the next, we'll be starting to advertise that next week and get the word out. Highly encouraging public community participation and engagement during that meeting. We would love to have the input from the community and the feedback and certainly give ample opportunity for anyone to ask questions about the project and, you know, the suggestions coming from the study that was performed. I do want to give some special thanks in the arrangement of that to our superintendent, Dr. Notton, and our performing arts tech guru, Mr. Matt Wade. They were very helpful in accommodating and helping me arrange for a date and a space and the technology needs for that meeting. I do appreciate their help in a big way. There is an item on my report this evening for a request for some discussion at the council level regarding the tax-acquired property bidding process. I was approached by a counselor to seek some input from others. You know, sending a, the idea is to set a a solid structured plan moving forward, you know, from that counselor, and we'd look for some input on some ground rules that we might be able to to put in place for that. Another thing I wanted to touch on was you know, we've had, we've had the new YouTube channel up for a bit now. It's been very well received. I've I've been contacted by several members of the community that have, and staff alike, that have that have reached out in support of that and recognizing how easy it is to access that information and be able to do it at their convenience. It's also you know, because that includes both council and committee, you know, in the past, there were no recordings of the committee meetings available regularly and easy, and I think those have been probably more watched than even the council meetings. There's a lot of exciting work going on there. Stemming from that, we have received a bit of positive feedback recently about the openness and the communication, the transparency that is taking place, you know, by myself and at the council level. And, you know, it's been acknowledged that we are actively listening and being open to educate very clearly how things are working and what's going on. We are, it's been observed that we are being observant and, you know, adapting to the community's needs and taking progressive action. You know, an example would be, you know, the conversation at the public level about snowmobile access to the downtown and, you know, recently we were able to take that under the wing of the Economic Development Committee and start devising a plan to bring forward for that. You know, that along with even just moving this council meeting time, that's been really well received, and people are acknowledging that. So I'd like to keep that momentum moving forward. I think it shows that the community, when the community is comfortable with with having that communication and being able to share their concerns and their ideas, you know, in a non-confrontational environment, that, you know, we can, we can seriously work together and, you know, move forward and keep making progress. I'd like to see that continue. You know, I'd provide my regular reminder here that, you know, anybody can reach me at manager@milauke.org, seven two three seven thousand. You know, please contact me with any questions and concerns. I'll always do my best to explain to the best of my ability, you know, and the ongoing reminder that social media is not the most appropriate venue to be contacting myself or members of the council. You know, we just can't guarantee that we'll all see that. But we do appreciate the concern from the community, and we're open to talking about any of this stuff with them. We'll go a little further in here. The Works has been out aggressively, you know, recently doing a great job being very proactive, filling potholes that are already popping up from, you know, the winter wear and tear. I've seen them a couple of days out this week and, you know, got a nice phone call from a community member this morning who acknowledged that they were pleased to see them outfilling those potholes. And, you know, and on top of all the other work that they're able to accomplish with such a small crew. They've been spending some time opening storm drains, you know. This time of year, we see a lot of fluctuation in temperature, the weather. We've had a lot of melting, a lot of pooling of water, and, you know, that that happens when the storm drains themselves get clogged. So it's great that we have a crew that'll be proactive like that and go around and unplug those drains so that we can you know, save our streets from getting flooded like that. Ralph did mention in his update, the traffic lights at Sycamore and Central Street. That's the intersection that, you know, Hanford and McDonald's. There is a there's an issue there with the camera that needs replacing. We do have some rough numbers on that, but that is something that we'll need to put right out front and get taken care of. You know, they've had to manipulate the system on that so that it works properly. There's a wire under the ground that's not not working the way it should, and it needs to be replaced with a camera. So that'll be a small investment. With the recreation department, it was noted to me that there's some difficulty filling the lifeguard positions in all of our three towns right now. We want to encourage the, of course, the teens who usually have those jobs to look into applying for those roles and get the parents engaged to encourage their high school students to apply for those jobs. It is a pretty great summer gig for a high school student, but it is absolutely appropriate and acceptable for adults to apply for those positions. it is absolutely appropriate and acceptable for adults to apply for those positions as well. There is some certification involved and there is some flexibility with covering that cost at the at the local level as well that that might be able to be considered. As some of you may know, we have hired Evan Campbell as our code enforcement officer. He is playing a dual role at this point. He is continuing part-time as as our building custodian and also as our code enforcement officer, you know, making the position full-time for him. And acting as licensed plumbing inspector as soon as that certification is complete. He has really entered that role with with some with some great abilities and and smarts and and I've been very impressed already. You know, I think that he's going to work out really well and do some do some good work for our town. We do have the CID director open. We 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 had made an offer recently. You know, it was not accepted. Respectively. And, you know, so we're we're continuing to look for qualified applicants. We have had a few recently that came in that are very encouraging. We also have a firefighter advanced EMT or paramedic position available too within our emergency services department there. There is still no water at the airport building. We have been back and forth with our insurance company. We have not, to my knowledge, I haven't spoken to Mr. Campbell today. That's Jeff Campbell, not Evan. But last I knew, we had not heard from the adjuster yet. We are still actively pursuing getting that situation fixed. In the world of the town treasurer, we do have the FY twenty one audit complete. And she has requested report copies that we will be able to distribute to the counselors as well for review. And looking at the revenue sharing, we are a hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars favorable to budget. That is a good sign. I would like to point out that we are still we are still in need of the second half of the tax payments. We are continuing to see a trickle of payments come in. We do have a remaining unpaid balance of four, a little over four hundred and thirty thousand dollars for the real estate taxes. Those were due January thirteenth and are now accruing additional fees. So we'd like to encourage everyone to, you know, make a make a great effort to pay those off, you know, as soon as they're able. But we did have the tax collector. Karen, she she sent out a public letter out of courtesy as a reminder, you know, there there are phone calls and and letters being mailed, but we did put a message on our social media and on our website to remind folks that the thirty day notice is actually going to be going out here pretty soon. And we would certainly not like to see the lanes take place. So we're trying to be proactive and get that message out in a in a courteous way so that we can try to help the families you know, resolve that payment situation. We did have we have a really well operating fire ambulance, public health and safety department. They are business as usual. And we do have the police department attached, police report attached. I did want to point out a couple of things in the police report. They have hired at full complement at this point. Officer Guyverston is now back patrolling our streets of Milwaukee. He had been a he had been an officer here in the past and in East Milwaukee as well. So it's it's nice to see him back as well as an officer named Mallory Clayton. They do have, from what I understand, a full-time officer leaving in the near future, but a part-time officer is becoming full-time here in the in the next few weeks. So that'll balance out and we will remain covered in full with the the great support of the East Milwaukee Police Department. They also noted in this report that they're in the beginning stages of a website to be put live to continue their growing presence on the internet. That will be www.eastmilwaukeepolice.com. So you can look look towards future for that and, you know, follow them with any of their news and updates on there. So thank you all for your time this evening. That concludes my report. Happily take any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager, and also just a shout out to Councilor Braden, who very quickly assembled this technological side of things here. So just thank you for that. Any council comments or questions, Councilor Braden?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The discussion that Peter had been talking about this week, Jameson, was we had a, the last time we did the bidding and approval for tax acquired properties, we discussed about setting up a process as a council. That way, we didn't have any confusion moving forward. We still haven't talked about it and I want to hold true to our word that we do have that discussion eventually. This is basically just a reminder that I feel like it needs to happen sooner than later. Super excited to hear about Officer Guyver, Guyverston getting back on. I actually had a discussion with him and told him how excited I was. I remember when he was my dear officer. So super excited to see him back. Still upsetting to hear about the water at the airport. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Any other counsel comment on that or support? Councilor Madour?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On the tax required property bidding process, might I suggest that we ask our county attorney for either some kind of outline or working template for the process to make sure that what we do decide to do will be both legal and done fairly as far as the process is concerned. Ultimately, I would assume that any any bid process or any situation that's set up, we'd have to go through Dean anyway and I I'd just like to go ahead and kind of give this to him and see if he can come up with maybe a step-by-step or a template for consideration of bids when the process is out there. I think it would be a good jumping off point with council so that we're not just running in several different directions at the same time, trying to go ahead and get this straightened out so that we can all move forward as rather than be all over the place. So that would be my suggestion going forward. As far as the traffic light at Sycamore and Central, I I think this, I agree with the manager. This is a priority. It's a safety issue. That switch is gone pretty much. And if you've ever been there after, like, we lost the power a couple of times here and that light goes to a blinking red, that stays like that for a while, or it can freeze on just a red light in one direction while the yellow central street side stays green and that enables people to race up and down the street. I think it's it it should be a number one priority safety issue for the town going forward to get that straight around. Whether that requires another camera or whatever to do it, I would encourage that that's the direction the town goes and certainly another thing for if we want to go ahead and use our funds to to do something to the safety of our citizens, that would be a bad idea going forward. As far as the airport and water freezing up is concerned, I see that the tenant is also has no water now. Is that going forward, is that also covered under our insurance as far as anything that needs to be done to remedy that situation going forward?
Jeff, if you want to speak to that?
Jeff Campbell, our manager. That water that our tenant is connected to our water. So if we we own that hangar, you know, for that tenant. So somewhere in the driveway, it splits at the old break road hangar. So since we figure out our situation, it should give it more effect as well. So I've been working with him, making sure he has the supplies he needs, the supplies we need to maintain at this time. Now, to to update the manager on what happened today. The adjuster did show up with very little information. He had an address and had been frozen by. So he assumed that he had water damage in the building. And he called saying, I'm looking for your address, but I don't know where I'm going. He wasn't even told it was the airport. So I started out a little bit concerned. So we discussed what was going on, that it's frozen in the ground and that we needed to do something to remedy it or we were going to have to wait till spring. So he said that he had to go back and review the policy and see if the policy even covers particular or if it only covers so many feet from the building. I have no idea on that driveway where that's where it comes from. I just know that.
Did he give you or a timeline, Jeff, as far as getting back to, I think he had a chance to now give price and situation and look up our policy?
He said he would go through the policy and get back to me as soon as possible. But we've been waiting two weeks for it to show up. Four weeks today since we've got water.
Are we, I mean, my my thought is if we've got a tenant on there that it doesn't have water, is is that tenant going to look for some kind of reimbursement or?
He's on his own meter.
Okay.
He splits off and he's on his own meter. So he's having the water company come pull the meter so that he's not paying a bill. When this is going to be an issue for him? Is it because in May, the skydiving season starts and they have other businesses operating in there that he's going to be real concerned about not having any water? We don't have any water. We have a little leeway. We have a little wiggle room. We are operating. Not not real classy, but we're operating.
Thank you. Other than that, this is Chairman, other than welcoming the two new officers coming into the area, especially Kevin Guyverston, who of course everybody, I don't think is too many people in the tri-town area that doesn't know Kevin and know that he is a quality police officer with a stellar record, great personality and great community involvement. So certainly a good boost for the police department moving forward. So we're very fortunate to have him.
Thank you, Councilor Madour. Any other council con, Councilor Danforth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to applaud town manager for continuing to attend that leadership and civic leadership class with everything else on his plate. I don't know a lot of other attendees, but I know one of the attendees. I've heard great things about this program. I'm very happy to support you in that role. Regarding the DOT bike and pen safety study, we talked about the being the eight oh one. We didn't mention the calendar day because that's that year and that
We have not set a solid time for that yet. I would assume it would be early evening. But I that will will have that situated by the time the advertising goes out next week.
Around the discussion, the tax acquired company bidding process, I'm absolutely on board. I think the process is ready. I'm wondering if we need to start with a lawyer or not, if we just need to look at what other towns are doing, or put exactly what we have been doing in the past, if we have our thing to talk about specifically with some account players. It's just my thoughts because apparently or obviously what we can do because of the legal, what can we come back? To my knowledge, I didn't like their to be an issue. So it's very reality. Yes, everything's talked about being placed to happen. But then after, but we need to discuss it. Regarding the RAC department, just upstate, it's great that I know the skating rink is getting a lot of use and enjoying by the community. I know when we had our snow down, there's a lot of informal talk about the skating rink and what McCruys has been saying with. So I'm just wondering if we could reach out to the RAC director and see what you have in mind. I heard of like just talks about maybe a roof over the link, maybe replacing some of the boards or just what McCruys, we can do to that town asset. Because we can do things with the greater competition, just knowing where our town is being able to do well by community members.
Part of the budget process we have part of the budget process that we have is now, as we did a couple of years ago, we instituted a five-year plan for the Recreation Department for infrastructure work. And we've been following it right along. So if something like that were to be to propose, I would suggest that that become part of capital improvement plan for recreation. So it's blended in with projects that are already on board and are already a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Madour. I wasn't aware that there was a five-year timeline and it's been happening around the region. So I'm happy to to learn that. I know about it and just wanted to put that on.
Thank you, Councilor Danforth, Councilor McKeon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Welcome to the new hire, Evan Campbell. Glad to see his influence here in the community. Also, it's also good to see the full complement by the police department. Despite the upcoming transfer law on that there will be someone promoted to that new full-time position. When it comes to that policy, I'm also kind of in agreement with Councilor Danforth where we do have some resources here and I think it may be appropriate for our town to look into what other towns are doing when it comes to that bidding process. We'll save us a little bit of money on the forefront. But if we do think, you know, the legality should be something to look into, we could always look for illegal advice. I also don't believe the process we're doing and any legal question that being illegal or anything. We determined that policy and made it subjective with some objective elements as well. You know, for us to ultimately make the final decision on where those placements go. Always room for improvement though. Looking forward to that. Thank you for the report, Mr. Manager, and kudos to your leadership classes as well. Much else. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McKeon. Any other council con? I'd just like to add also just to welcome the new officers and Mr. Campbell as well. Good to see that hole being filled. On the tax acquired properties, as I mentioned before, I'm very open to seeing, you know, what proposals it might be. My concern is that as the community changes and the needs and demands of the communities change, I just don't want any formal process to inhibit our ability to respond to whatever issues might exist in that time. Right now, we're seeing big housing shortage that was not an issue five, six years ago, at least as much as it is now. So, you know, I would just be concerned about making it too objective to the point where we can't make enough of our own determinations on what would best serve the community at that time. Other than that, that's it for me. Any comment from the public on the manager's board, Mr. Braden?
Susan Alessandro asks, will the school board be joining the YouTube channel?
That is a different board. They can determine their own policies there, Susan. You don't have to ask them.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
I would just add that you know, if it in from from where I said is, you know, if the school board was open to or or interested in having their meetings, you know, recorded and saved and shared with with me or uploaded to that that same YouTube channel, I would be support to have, I would be in support of having that all in one place and willing to work with them to arrange that. So So. I will. Yeah, I'll be open to having that discussion if they would like.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Hi, Sammy Sullivan, one of four Sunset Drive. The thing that concerns me the most in the manager's report is the loss of a firefighter EMT. It was my understanding that we were down to where we only had like very limp, very scarce coverage to begin with. And. I hope. That position is built very quickly because I don't want the fire department, the EMTs to go the way of the police department. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Gotti.
Virginia going two twenty-two to God Avenue. On the issue with the water airport. We have the technology today to pick up and look. Well, to that circuit energizing and it usually will melt out. My other concern is if it's frozen in the main header pipe, where the fire hydrants are tied into it, then you have a more, a much, more serious problem. So where is the problem? Is it on the town property? Is it on the, is it on the, the water company's line? That, that's a question. It should be very easy to heat that line up or out. I've seen it done many times before. So there's no reason to have gone this long without having water there. The biggest question is, is the water at the hydrants? That's a big question.
Jeffrey Arns, part of that.
Jeff Campbell Airport Manager. In response to the first point of that question, that statement was well isn't no longer allowed. We can't use a well. The water company has not been allowed to use their well or on pipes or folks secure. There's something with burning down houses or electrocuting people or, or appliances in homes or something. So if somebody wasn't doing something right, it used to be a common practice. I agree with Mr. Gotti on that. It used to be a common practice. The fire hydrant, I don't know. The water company has been, I have personally called them up there three times because this water are coming out of the ground. They say it's natural one. They've used their listening devices on hydrant and the meter attachment in the basement there in the box. They say they hear no water running. If there was a break, they would hear water running. That's how they find main breaks. So. I'll call them again and see if they want to come open their hydrant, but then they got to open their hydrant to find out if it has water and then they have to pump it out. So that's up to that. All we can do is suggest it.
Thank you, Jeff, and thank you, Mr. Gotti. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none. Moves us to new business. And Council Pre, if I could have your reader number thirty-three, twenty-twenty-two, please?
Order number thirty-three dash twenty, twenty dash twenty-two, providing for execution of the town warrant March tenth, twenty twenty-two, and in order for the town warrant March tenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of ninety thousand, one hundred and four dollars and eighty cents hereby be approved.
Motion by Council Pre, here by Council Mador. Have you heard of one act?
Ambulance medical billing, one thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and eighty-five cents. Benefit internet corporation, which is telephone system, one thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and ninety-eight cents. Dead River, fifteen thousand, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-two cents. MMA, two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty-one cents. That's broken down into two items, twenty-six, two thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-one cents for the unemployment proportion and a hundred and forty dollars for administrative fees associated with the unemployment. Harley Ward, eleven thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and seventy cents. That is relating to the lights on Knott's Court Avenue, the streetlights in Knott's Court Avenue and, and the veterans park project. MRC, two thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Main tech group, one thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and five cents. Main water, thirty-four thousand, thirteen dollars and one cent. MRC landfill expense, there's two separate loans for a total of four thousand, seven hundred and twelve dollars and ninety-one cents. New England salt, two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-two cents. Purple oil, three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars. That combination of the municipal building, the garage, two, two municipal building, one to the garage, one to the firehouse and one at the airport. Versus power, one thousand, four hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents.
Thank you, Council Pre. Any other council caller? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor, Council Bragg. Aye, Council Pre. Aye, Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McDoan.
Aye.
Chair going by, Council Mador.
Aye.
Council Bob here.
Aye.
Order passed at seven zero. Council Pre, if I could ever read order thirty-four, twenty twenty-two, please?
Order number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant from March tenth, twenty twenty-two, in order for the wastewater warrant from March tenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-six.
Okay, good, yeah.
Okay, we'll do this all over again. Remember the practice. Order number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of the wastewater warrant from March tenth, twenty twenty-two, in order that the wastewater warrant from March tenth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents be approved.
Second motion by Council Pre, second by Council Mador. Any others on that?
Sir. The main municipal bond bank, a total of eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents. That is on three different items, the largest being sixty-two, two seventy, two forty-nine, excuse me, seventeen, for one bond, twenty thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents for the second one, seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars for the third bond. Additionally, the main water was three thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars and eighty cents. And wastewater to the town of Milonak at five thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and eighty-seven cents. I, I believe I have that wrong. The dollar amount, I think that is the, of built from or fueling the.
The attachment.
Expense to the town or market in payment of receiving from the town, correct? Or fuel for the three vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pre. Any other council comment? Council Pre.
The only comment I would make in reference to that and reference to the bond payment, we're doing a fairly good job on bonds, both municipal and wastewater. So it would be beneficial, I think, for the council to have what remaining balance and what the length of those bonds are, just to stay, keep it to the topic. Everybody should understand what that is.
Thank you, Council Pre. I have a minute.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, when we start going to the budget workshops, the town treasurer usually will give a detailed rundown as far as the bonds are concerned and what paydowns are and where we are as far as balance is concerned. That's something that happens really during workshop for that far.
Nothing, Council Pre.
Just chairman, I, I do understand that and I did look back and see what the figures were, but I just think it's advantageous for us if we're going through to know where we're overall, where we're standing in these various things. We're doing very well on the municipal side and I think wastewater is doing well as well. But I just think it's always advantageous for us to be reminded where, where we are and not just what's in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Pre. Any other council call? Seeing none, any comment from the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor, Council Pre. Aye, Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McDoan.
Aye.
Chair going by, Council Mador.
Aye.
Council Peltier.
Aye.
Council Bragg.
Aye.
Order passed at seven zero. Council Peltier, if I could ever read order number thirty-five, twenty twenty-two, please?
Order number thirty-five, twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of application for reappearance to the Board of Appeals. It is ordered that the law, the council prove the application, reap point shall surround it to the Board of Appeals, their three-year term to expire March twenty twenty-five. No, 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 certainly hold seats on the Board of Appeals and, and will expire at the end of March twenty twenty-two.
Second. Motion by Council Peltier, second by Council Bragg, and discussion to the council. Council Pre.
Mr. Chairman, I, I appreciate the fact that we have people in town looking forward to this. I believe Charlie's also on the planning board.
Yes.
And, and not the appeals board if they, if they want to challenge the rule. He'll, would. Does he then have to not vote on the appeal board as we take it out of its interest from twenty-two?
My understanding is that in a situation like that, if the situation arose, that he would have to abstain from the vote.
Any other discussion with the council? Seeing none out of the public, Mr. Gotti?
Virginia going two twenty-two to God Avenue. I served on the planning board at one time and I wanted to serve on the Board of Appeals and they said I had to drop out of the planning board, board if I want to serve on the Board of Appeals. If you read main state statutes, it is very clear and according to Mr. Sramy's application here, that he has had the training, it is very clear in there that it is a conflict of interest to serve on both. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gotti. Any other other comment? Seeing none back to Council, Council Pre.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't want to pull up the base and we want to talk about it, but I'd like to have the clarification if that is true, that there's a conflict in the statute. And I don't think we should proceed with this. I'd like to have somebody, if somebody wants to talk about it, I'd have some in this prepared.
Any other comment? Council Mador?
I second.
That was not a motion.
Not a motion.
So you can make the motion.
Mr. Chairman, Council Bragg and others.
Council Bragg, go ahead.
I was gonna ask a question, but I'll, I'll get an answer next time.
Okay, I would ask that order, number thirty. I would move that order thirty-five, that twenty twenty-two be tabled until the next council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Council Mador, second by Council Bragg, all in favor, Council Bragg.
Aye.
Council Pre.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McDoan.
Aye.
Chair going by, Council Mador.
Aye.
Council Bob here. The order is tabled until the next meeting. Council Bragg, if I could read order number thirty-six, twenty twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, order number thirty-six dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for entertainment license for American Legion Post eighty. It is ordered that the attached application to entertainment license is hereby approved for Michael A. I have no idea how to pronounce it. Maljakowski for Kimball Drive, Midway, doing business in South Don'tby, Henry, American Legion Post eighty-nine seventy Central Street, Milonak.
Motion by Council Bragg, second by Council Mador, discussion to the council. Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor, Council Bob here. Council Mador.
Aye.
Chair going by, Council McDoan.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council Pre.
Aye.
Council Bragg.
Aye.
Order passed at seven zero. Council Mador, if I could ever read order number thirty-seven, twenty twenty-two, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Order thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of an application for a malt venus and spiritual slifter license for the American Legion Post eighty. It is ordered the attached, ordered that the attached application for a malt venus and spiritual slifter license is hereby approved for Donovan Henry, American Legion Post eighty-nine, nine seventy Central Street, Milonak, doing business as Donovan Henry, American Legion Post eighty-nine seventy Central Street, Milonak.
Second.
Motion by Council Mador, second by Council Bragg, and discussion to the council. Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor, Council Pre.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McDoan.
Aye.
Chair going by, Council Mador.
Aye.
Council Peltier.
Aye.
Council Bragg.
Aye.
Order passed at seven zero. Council McDoan, if I could ever read order number thirty-eight, twenty twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number thirty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, providing for approval of wastewater building change. It is ordered that the Milonak County Council approves the proposed wastewater building change with an estimated annual cost increase of one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars, eighty cents to be extended from account number two-one-zero-zero wastewater administration. Note, there is sufficient amount of budget fund to cover the remainder of FY twenty-two building cost from account number two-one-zero-zero wastewater administration.
Second. Motion by Council McDoan, second by Council, with an order discussion with the council. Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, Council Bragg, if you have a comment?
So just comment, I just want people to understand what this item is and it's, it's the suggestion or the idea of going from postcards to non-holds, of being mailed to the customers. A lot of people complain about losing the cards and not getting the cards and it was felt lonely on both sides, though we're sending the bill, but it would be a more advantageous way of eliminating some of those conflicts.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
I'd just add on to that. Diana had showed me a sample of the new. Sewer building, you can see attached in there and it conveniently has the credit card information slot on there. So that's a, that's a big step in the right direction. That'll be very convenient for folks, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. How here?
Yeah, I was curious, guess know the cost, any dollar? It lists the, the folks that is being, first, first class, I wonder why there is a, a welfare available there? Please.
That is. That is at a, at a pre-sort rate.
So discounted rate already?
It is a discounted rate that we are receiving because an average post, postage stamp right now is fifty-five cents.
Boy, I'm out of the book.
Thank you, Diana. Thank you, Council Peltier. Any other council comments? And just back to the public in case there's any other public comment? Seeing none back to the council, all in favor, Council Pre.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McDoan.
Aye.
Chair going by, Council Mador.
Aye.
Council Peltier.
Aye.
Council Bragg.
Aye.
Order passed at seven zero. Council Danforth, if I could ever read order number thirty-nine, twenty twenty-two, please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Order number thirty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, providing for execution of bid for the sale of used equipment. It is ordered that the Milonak County Council assess the bid offer for the sale of the used couple of lots of equipment, a nineteen ninety-six trackless sidewalk machine, empty final one. As in, you know, it is further ordered that the bidding order to F A in the plane company and that the town manager is authorized to sign all necessary documents. You know, the town will be one bid, nothing in the plane company, four thousand dollars.
Motion by Council Danforth, second by Council Mador, discussion to the council, Council Bragg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After reviewing this, I'd sent him an email earlier. I'm just hoping to have these questions answered, but how I read the agreement that was written in twenty fifteen is that the loader. Oh, sorry. Wrong one, sorry, doing multiple things.
Any other council comment? Seeing none out of the public? Also seeing none back to the council, all in favor, Council Bragg.
Aye.
Council Bob here.
Aye.
Council Mador.
Aye.
Chair going by, Council McDoan.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council Pre.
Aye.
Order passed at seven zero. Council Pre, if I could ever read order number forty?
Order number forty dash twenty-two, twenty-two, providing for authorization, transfer ownership of equipment. It is ordered that town manager is authorized to make arrangements and sign all necessary agreements, transfer ownership of nineteen eighty-eight CAT nine three six E motor, serial number three three Z zero three one eight nine to Alcatton. Note, this motor was given to the town or wanted at no cost and is currently under equipment use agreement with Alcatton Motor. Motor, this motor was flown, has flown, rented, is unusable. The cost of replacement of the motor is estimated between fifteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars. Our Katon is willing to make that investment in the equipment that we'd like to own the motor as the outcome in continuing using it on the mill site in Milannock.
Second.
Motion by Council, pray, second by Council, Medor. Um, I will just note that I had spoken to the manager on this item. Uh, there are pieces of information coming in now, uh, that he did not have previously and requested that this be tabled. Um, but if any councilor does want to speak on this, so of course, I'm thinking of the council comment, Council, Reagan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Medor, can you mute your mic? Uh, so, sorry, e- even though we're going to table this, you know, the concern that I had was after reading the agreement that was written in twenty fifteen is that, uh, our Katon would maintain and keep the loader in good working condition. Uh, regardless if we transfer ownership or not, I'm under the assumption that they would have to replace the motor regardless, because the agreement states that it needs to be kept in good working condition. Thank you.
Thank you, Council, Reagan. Any other council comment? Mr. Manager, did you have anything you wanted to say or add to this?
Um, I, I would just add that, um, you know, I was slightly ill-informed, um, you know, and, and it certainly I've learned more about the agreement. I, uh, was able to locate the documentation on that as you see included in the council packet. Um, so with the new information on that, um, I do apologize for, um, you know, kind of rushing that and, um, I will plan to review this and research it, um, more detailed, uh, to bring back for consideration if necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Council comment? Council, Reagan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that we table order number forty, twenty-twenty-two to the next council meeting.
Motion by Council, Reagan, second by Council, pray, all in favor, Council, Reagan.
Aye.
Council, pray.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council McKeon.
Aye.
Chair Gullyby, Council Medor.
Aye.
Council Peltier. The order is tabled, seven zero. And with that, I've moved us to reports and communications. The Warren Committee for March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two council meeting will be Council, Reagan and Council, Danforth. Most good with that. Thank you very much. Uh, any chair committee report? Council, Danforth.
Chairman, I just want to make notes that, um, during next day, seven Milannock Committee meeting is, um, Wednesday, March sixteenth, at four o'clock. The agenda is just listed to the website, so we'll be by Zoom here in person at the library. I do want to, based on our new policy, I just just wanted to check into Diana about, um, the information because now as I understand it, it's a public notice that we need to go to the new paper. Is that right? And so, um, how do we make it easy for you? I guess it's probably gonna be I'm thinking it's probably need to just get a standard meeting schedule so that you know. Also, you tell me, tell me when to get stuff to you.
If you continue, if you continue to send me the agendas, if you have them available. Um, every Tuesday or Wednesday, I am able to give that information to the calendar. Um, community calendar and the newspaper, put under post free chart. So that is not considered, you know, an actual public notice. It's notification to the public. So all I will need to do is
So I will, um, also want to let you know that, um, the H R committee is in collaboration with the youth committee is putting out a ser, a tri-town, um, survey. We've got a tri-town community center of interest and need. So if it's going to be on our Facebook page and our website and there'll be some piece of copy available at the town office and at the library. So we'll keep that open for at least a two or three weeks in the long term. So stay tuned.
Thank you, Council, Danforth. Any other council or chair committee report? I will note that, uh, both the Economic Development Committee and Sustainability Committee met recently. Uh, had very good meetings that are posted on YouTube. Economic Development Committee was, uh, looking further uh, further into discussion on short-term rentals, uh, as we have been doing already and will continue that and, uh, will eventually propose uh, some changes to the council, uh, hopefully in the near future. Um, we also looked at, uh, economic development issues surrounding the downtown and ATV trails and snowmobile trails. Uh, we had some proposals from, uh, John Raymond on how we can change some of the routes that would go through, uh, the community to give more access to the downtown businesses. Um, obviously keeping safety and signage and other things like that in mind. Um, so at some point we will have a, uh, proposition as well for the council to review. Uh, sustainability meeting, uh, has also been continuing, uh, on identifying potential property for, uh, a fire station building uh, among other items. And, uh, right now there is a due call for one of them. Another one will be out soon. So I'll stay tuned on when the next meeting will be, but feel free to look at the YouTube channel, uh, to review any of the past meetings. Um, and with that, I will open it up to two-minute public comment if anyone from the public wants to speak. Jeff?
Son, Jeff Campbell Airport Manager. Um, I know you've probably heard enough about the water airport tonight, but I just wanted to fill in a couple of blanks. Um, the public works director and myself, uh, work pretty diligently at the beginning of this to try to resolve it. Um, the biggest problem for the public's information is that we have outdated plumbing. It's old galvanized threaded pipe. And the modern steamers that go into these pipes need smooth, more copper tubing radiuses or turns to make these machines work. The, the galvanized plumbing, you hit a dead end in every ninety-degree turn. So the machines won't work. And now that they've been electrical current, unusable for this situation. That's why we can't get it done because of the outdated plumbing in the building. Also many other outdated things, but that is the reason that we haven't been able to now. We've had people from Lincoln, we've had the water company, we've had the local plumbing company. And now the insurance company trying to get involved and straighten it out. It goes on much longer. It's probably going to fall naturally. Uh, we keep working at that, but it's not that it hasn't been looked at or we have been my soul route has been read out for a since the start. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mr. Gotti?
Uh, I'd just like to give you a little bit more on your last work, just to try to explanation field. Uh, when, when this agreement was done, uh, I always did help do this up. And it was agreed upon that item number eight, said user agrees that the equipment falls, fails, perform, act, except, accepted by the user. It will be responsibility of the user to repair and correct the problem. This loader, when we looked at it, we looked at what we've got, and I looked at motors throughout the United States. This loader goes for right around thirty-eight thousand dollars operation. Period. So in other words, if you're going to sell it, if you're going to give them slow rates and they're going to put twenty thousand dollars in, they're, they're fifteen thousand dollar plus in, in the wood that they, that they made out on this. This loader is a loader that we had for a spare town. I think it should come back to the town if, after they fix. Uh, second thing, talking about snowmobiles. Uh, I had a young fellow come run his snowmobile right up across my road, which is again this year. Uh, they're completely off the trail area of the snowmobile trail access through the town. This is unacceptable. These people need to understand that there is a proper place for the snowmobiles or ATVs. It's on ATV, the day driving representative street. When are we going to correct that problem? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gotti. And just to speak to that point, uh, we did discuss in the committee that very issue. Um, and we, we do operate under the understanding that, um, a lot of those who are not following those rules are actually people from town doing that. Um, and we discussed, um, part of this strategy is also how we can get the word out and make it very known, um, to the public, not only of these potential changes, but where, uh, where these paths go. Uh, how to operate safely, have better signage, um, and things of that nature. So that is being, uh, discussed. So I appreciate you bringing that to us, Mr. Reagan.
Julie Archie says ATVs are a huge problem.
Thank you, Julie Archie. Any other public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll seek a motion, your turn.
Second.
Motion by Council Medor, second by Council, Reagan, all in favor, Council, Peltier.
Yeah.
Council, Council Medor.
Aye.
Chair Gullyby, Council McKeon.
Aye.
Council Danforth.
Aye.
Council, pray.
Aye.
Council, Reagan.
Aye.
We are adjourned six one.